May I, may I, may I have a word on?
Yeah, these all the changes are on yours.
Sorry?
It gets censored.
You ready? Okay. Uh, Dusare City Council joint, special joint Public Lands and Buildings in Finance Committee meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Members Bruce Truca, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, Dan Wireball, Public Lands and Buildings Chair, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shock, Monica Sack, Finance Chair, uh, which began at six o'clock. Or six thirty, I'm sorry. Six thirty, uh, and then I'd like to turn it over to Rob. Alright?
Pardon me? No, we're gonna write things in.
Okay. Good enough. I would like to, uh, Chair, I'd like to request an executive session of the Public Lands and Buildings Committee to discuss pending or imminent court action pursuant to Ohio Advice Code 121.22G3. Court action is pending if a lawsuit is due to miss, if action is imminent, if it is on the point of happening or is impending.
Do I hear motion?
Public Lands, somebody from Public Lands?
I move at this time at the City Council adjourns in executive session with all available elected officers at the Dusare City Administration and the members of Finance Committee, the Service Safety Director, if available, to discuss pending or imminent court action ORC Section 121.22G3. Court action is pending if a lawsuit has been commenced. Court action is imminent if it is on the point of happening or is impending.
I have a motion that the Public Lands and Buildings Committee in the finance, wait, Public Lands and Buildings adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Dusare City Administration and Service Safety Director and members of Finance Committee, Kevin Myers, Andy Shock, and Monica, Monica Sack, Chair, uh, if available to discuss pending or imminent court action ORC Section 121.22G3. Court action is pending if a lawsuit has been commenced. Court action is imminent if it is on the point of happening or is impending. Do I have a second?
From your committee, someone needs a second.
Sorry. McKeever?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shock? Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Except at six thirty-three PM?
Six thirty-three, okay, well, Council recessed at six thirty-three.
No, went into executive session at six thirty-three.
Went into executive session.
Okay, this we have to ask anyone to please leave. Right, the second page. Turn it back if I can use.
Uh, I have, I have a motion to adjourn executive session, so.
Sorry.
Marks, first and, Bruce the second, roll call vote.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Council adjourned executive session at six fifty-seven. So I just ask, I guess, if we're gonna ask, uh, for, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars for pool repairs, do you move? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
In the swimming pool fund?
In the swimming pool fund.
Moved from?
From, what was it?
Personal services to capital outlay.
Oh, okay, I guess that was, I didn't.
Next page.
Next page. Alright, there, yeah, yeah, twenty-five thousand dollars moved from personal services to capital outlay. I make a motion.
Thank you.
This is, this is Public Lands?
This is Public Lands and Buildings. We need, Public Lands and Buildings.
Okay, I'll do the favor.
Amen.
Okay. Motion carries. So, with that, we will.
Finance will take over.
Yeah. We will adjourn.
No, you're not.
You're adjourned. Finance will take over.
Yes, Finance takes over because it's a joint meeting.
Oh, it's a joint meeting, okay. Finance takeover.
So, we need, um, the approval for the transfer from a twenty-five thousand dollars from personal services to capital outlay. Does this be emergency legislation?
Pardon me?
Does this be emergency?
Yes.
So moved.
Second?
First by Kevin, second by Dan.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you're ready to adjourn this special meeting?
So, I have a motion to adjourn special joint Public Lands and Buildings Finance Committee meeting.
So moved.
Captain?
Second.
Dan.
Someone else can have it.
Adjourn at seven o'clock PM.
I want to see her and myself, Chair. Special Economic Development Committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reiser to discuss a community reinvestment area agreement. We agreed the legislation, Mayor, or did you like the? Did you see any, around the scene, or you know the legislation?
No, we just, just discuss it. If you like it, pass it. Approve.
If you'd like him to read part of it, the, the Kirk clerk will gladly read part of it for you if you want to start there. Okay?
Uh, this is, um, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Dusare to adjourn into a community reinvestment area agreement with Props For Us LLC and Monarch Restaurant Group, Inc., and an income tax agreement with Dusare City Schools and declaring this act an emergency, an emergency.
So this is the first CRA that we brought up under the, the new city CRA that we adopted several months ago, and this is for the, uh, restaurant, the Burger King restaurant out on the east side of town, and this will give, uh, our, our agreement under this is that we keep the Dusare City Schools whole as far as.
Yeah, they, they have to receive, the city schools have to agree to the abatement, and they have to be guaranteed, uh, a minimum of fifty percent of any increase in the property values, and that, that's paid for by the property owner, um, as are the costs of the program through the, uh, Podmark. This is our first one, Podmark, we did Pollard Enterprises, they used to approve this a week or two ago, yes, this last year. Um, and so this is kind of our first one, everybody running through it, and, um.
I make a motion to, I'm just gonna say. Motion by McKeever, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Wireball, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And I will adjourn Economic Development minute at seven oh three PM.
Ready? The regenerating of Dusare City Council for September the third, two thousand and nineteen is called to order at seven oh three PM. Please state and adjourn me in the pledge of allegiance. Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Truca?
Here.
Sack?
Here.
Foote?
Here.
Shock?
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the August twentieth, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Truca, second by Mr. McKeever to accept the minutes, all those in fever, fever, favor say aye?
Aye.
Or say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Uh, this is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. If anyone would like to address council this evening, that is one of the times that you're allowed during the meeting for that to happen. If you'd like to address council, please step to the podium, state your name and your address, please. Anyone to address council? None? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We have two letters here. Uh, the first one is addressed to, uh, the mayor, I don't have a date on this. The last several months, slicey years, were definitely a hell that we wished to never have to go through again. Living beside and around a drug house paralyzes you from daily living. You become scared of the what-ifs. What if a drug dealer moves bad in a sidewalk that comes through a window? What if the dealer or users sees us watching? What if they break through our homes? What if my child and a grandchild is exposed to this nonsense that has taken so many? What if walking to my car, someone robs me? Those were just a few of our what-ifs. We watched for what felt like an eternity as our neighborhood was ravished by this horrible addiction that plagues many families. We have all had an eye-opener. Drugs are no respect to a person, race, financial background, and age. We've watched as young women, women, young men, all colors of race and backgrounds injure and exit 115 Wallace, and we pray daily for our safety and even those involved in the drug use and sales. We prayed for a miracle. Our miracle took place on Thursday, August twenty-second. Our prayers were answered as we watched 115 Wallace be shut down. We are grateful for all involved, however, we know that our battle has not been completely won. We are asking that 115 Wallace be condemned and tore down. We have all been truly traumatized by what we have lived by and want nothing more than for it to be demolished. Our battle will be truly won once we know that we do not have to worry about another person occupying that property. We ask that the process of condemning the property be pushed and wished for no other options to take place. This property has truly been a nuisance for too long. Slight residents of the 100 block of Old San Antonio, and that has to be accepted at once.
Any questions or comments about that? Roll forward with this on down to the, to your office. You already got it, and, uh, make sure you received that, okay?
Would, would one of you want to accept it?
We're in the next section, file those, right? Okay, we'll do the other.
Okay, the second one is also addressed to the mayor, it's dated August twenty-ninth, uh, from Randy Kaufman of, uh, Tippin, Ohio, of the Dusare High School class of nineteen seventy-three. Dear Mayor Reiser, I wanted to thank Dusare in general for being wonderful to come back and visit. My wife and I enjoy attending the Rotters Festival as usual, it makes me proud to be from Dusare. This is also to thank you, or thank your municipal pool manager for allowing the rowing runners to freshen up and change after the run. She stayed and was friendly and kind after a very hot run. She was an excellent ambassador for all of us out of towners. I hope she is appreciated for her work. I know many runners did. Anyway, we're looking forward to returning to town for visits, but may not wait until next August. Thanks again sincerely, Randy Kaufman, and the person he's mentioning is Hannah, Hannah Muchler, who works with the pool here in the session.
It's nice to get something like that, isn't it?
Two and one.
Okay, I, I need, uh, a motion to accept and file these two communications.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers to accept and file the two communications, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. This is where we move on to standing committees. Mr. Foote, will you get us started with this, please?
Alright. Dusare City Joint Regular Committee Meeting, Thursday, August twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, at six PM. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, myself and Andrew Shock. Up first, Dusare City Joint Regular Committee Meeting was called to order by myself at six PM. Number two, public participation, we had none. Number three, order of committee business. Up first is Economic Development Committee called to order at six oh one PM, and we have the US Census. Members in attendance are Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Number one, US Census, for the twenty-twenty US Census, the city's population will be counted separate from the counties. For that to happen, legislation, legislation is required to creating a complete county committee. McKeever made a motion to request such legislation, with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, vote recessed Economic Development Committee at six oh three PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the report of the Economic Development Committee? None? Thank you. Moving on, Plating Committee, um, this, you're gonna read this?
Well, yes, I'm requesting, uh.
Okay. It is like, it is like four pages, he's gonna read it.
This is the Finance Committee meeting Thursday, August twenty-two, from six oh three to seven forty-seven PM. Members present, Monica Sack, Bruce Truca, Kevin Myers, and Mark McKeever, Chair. Number one, ODOT paving of Quaker Road. ODOT requires final legislation proposing the city's cooperation with ODOT for the agency's resurfacing of Quaker Road, State Route nineteen, between North Sandusky Avenue and the city's corporation limits. The city's share of the project cost has risen from fifty-four hundred dollars to ten thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, requiring an additional appropriation of six thousand dollars. Myers made a motion to request cooperation legislation, with a second by Sack, motion passed by voice vote. Number two, ODOT Municipal Bridge Inspection Program renewal. ODOT requires consent legislation for the city to participate in the agency's bridge inspection program services for twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two, with ODOT assuming one hundred percent of the program's cost. Myers made a motion requesting consent legislation, with a second by Sack, motion passed by voice vote. Number three, codified ordinance one-one-nine-one-point-zero-eight permanent signs. Zoni Administrator Landon Hill has requested clarification on codified ordinance one-one-nine-one-point-zero-eight-H3, which states that no part of any sign shall be placed in, over, or extend onto any public right-of-way. Hill noted that in the downtown business district, the property line is usually in line with the face of the structure, making most signs in violation of the ordinance as now written. Law Director Robert Ratliff noted that there would be many sign parameters to consider in admitting the ordinance. Committee members scheduled a special plating committee meeting for Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, at six PM at Shines Art Park to continue discussion of the matter. As just FYI, that meeting did not occur, we did not have fore. Uh, number four, codified ordinance nine-zero-five-point-zero-four-A sidewalk construction requirements, and codified ordinance nine-zero-seven-point-zero-three-A driveway location and width. Zoni Administrator Landon Hill explained that because of right-of-way and easement considerations, a sidewalk to be installed by Burger King at fifteen-seventeen East Mansfield Street can't be located to meet building code requirements requiring legislation to allow for the variance. It was noted that sidewalks are needed in each adjacent block, but Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that the city cannot require the installation of sidewalks. Myers made a motion requesting legislation allowing for the sidewalk variance of fifteen-seventeen East Mansfield Street, with a second by Sack, motion passed by voice vote. Ratliff suggested that codified ordinance nine-zero-five-point-zero-four on sidewalk construction requirements be amended to allow instances such as that required by Burger King to be addressed by the Plating Commission instead of council because the commission provides for a hearing process that council does not. Ratliff also suggested that codified ordinance nine-zero-seven-point-zero-three on driveway location and width be amended to change the width of driveways presumed reasonable for pedestrian safety from twenty feet to twenty-five feet in residential districts and thirty feet in commercial districts to account for the size of vehicles today, with variance requests to be handled by the Plating Commission. The zoning administrator was asked to research sidewalk requirements on new construction, the matter was continued. Number five, zoning reclassification for South Highland Avenue and Phaler Street properties. Zoning Administrator Landon Hill detailed to propose zoning reclassification of four properties at nine forty and nine forty-eight South Highland Avenue and nine nineteen and nine fifty-three Phaler Street from urban neighborhood residential R3 to limited industrial commercial LIC for a new landscaping business owned by Dane Kennedy. The properties would be utilized for storage. Truca made a motion to request draft legislation making the zoning reclassification with a second by Sack, motion passed by voice vote. A public hearing on the matter was scheduled for Tuesday, October eighth, at five PM in council chambers. Residents in the area will be notified of the hearing by mail no later than September eighth. Number six, zoning reclassification, new residential use for two-two-five-one Whetstone Street. Zoning Administrator Landon Hill detailed, they proposed zoning reclassification of the properties of two-fifty-one and two-seventy-three Whetstone Street from urban neighborhood, neighborhood residential R3 to neighborhood business N-D for a Dusare outreach and restoration network or born hub center. In addition, a new permitted use for transitional housing for displaced people experiencing homelessness in the R3 would require amending of the zoning ordinances. Hill noted that the zoning reclassification would result in spot zoning, and that instead of granting a new permitted use for the R3 district, it may be wiser to look into creating a new zoning district designation for uses such as this. In any event, the matter of the new permitted use has to be addressed before draft legislation could be requested, and a public hearing scheduled concerning the zoning reclassification. Concil and Gerald Dix, two-on-one Whetstone Street spoke against the proposal. Tabby Lynn and Eliza Poole aboard and Jeff Beamer of GNF Construction detailed what the facility would be used for. Beamer added that the plans for the facility are being scaled down. Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that the city could face legal challenges over spot zoning. The matter was continued. Number seven, non-conforming residential lots. The zoning administrator Landon Hill has asked the committee to look into addressing inconsistencies in codified ordinance one-one-five-one-point-zero-four-C concerning development restrictions for non-conforming residential lots in non-residential zoning districts. He added that single-family residences in districts zoned for apartments faced similar setback restrictions. Myers made a motion to request draft legislation correcting these inconsistencies with a second by Truca. Motion passed by voice vote. Law Director Rob Ratliff said he would have the legislation drafted for council's Joint Regular Committee meeting of September nineteenth. And number eight, codified ordinance one-one-nine-one-point-zero-seven temporary signs. At council's regular meeting of August twenty, Law Director Rob Ratliff distributed a notice on the regulations for temporary signs in the city, adding that political signs while exempt from a permanent requirement still must adhere to other regulations. Enforcement will begin after Labor Day. Zoning Administrator Landon Hill reported that temporary banner signs can be no larger than twenty square feet. A sign larger than that currently exists, Kurt Fankhauser, sixteen-seventy-five South Sandusky Avenue disagreed. The matter was continued. Number nine, McKeever recessed Plating Committee at seven forty-seven PM.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes of the Plating Committee? None? Uh, moving on, Health and Safety Committee, Mr. Myers?
Health and Safety, met August twenty-two, twenty nineteen, at seven forty-seven PM. Members present, were Mark McKeever, Bruce Truca, Andrew Shock, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Number one, liquor license transfer. Council received a notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control that a liquor license is being transferred from Dusare Suburban Lanes, nine-seventy-five Hopkins Avenue and Patios, Dusare, to Proffer County, Ohio, R10 LLC, DBA, Dusare Suburban Lane, St. Agus. Police Chief David Kepke has voiced no objection to the transfer. McKeever made a motion to not request a hearing on the transfer with a second by Truca, motion passed by voice vote. The matter will go before the full council in its next meeting on September third, no legislation is required. Number two, traffic control map changes. The committee was notified that after raising of the speed limit on Canyon Road three-thirty West from thirty-five miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour was referred to committee earlier in the week. It was determined that the matter still has to be addressed by the city traffic commission. Meanwhile, it was noted that legislation already requested concerning the host of other traffic control map changes has been drafted but is not yet completed. It will be brought before the full council for its consideration at the next meeting on September third. Number three, Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee meeting at seven forty-nine PM.
Questions or comments regarding the report? We need a motion from, I'm sorry, I didn't look up. None? Okay, we need a vote then by full council to not request a, uh, a meeting with the liquor control board over this liquor license transfer. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Truca. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to Public Lands and Buildings, Mr. Wireball?
Uh, Public Lands and Buildings Committee met Thursday, August twenty-second, twenty nineteen, seven forty-nine PM. Members present, Bruce Truca, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Memorial Tree Program, Mayor Jeff Reiser explained that the city tree board is interested in instituting a memorial tree program in the city. The memorials for deceased loved ones will be sold for fee, which would pay for the new trees. No plaques or markers would be included. Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that a separate fund would have to be created in the budget to handle these transactions, and that program guidelines should be established. The tree board will research the matter further. While all recessed, Public Lands and Buildings at seven fifty-five PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the Public Lands and Buildings Committee report? None? Moving on, Finance, the Sack?
Finance Committee met at seven fifty-five to seven fifty-seven PM on Thursday, August twenty-second. Members present, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shock, and myself, Chair. Number one, ODOT paving of Quaker Road. The Plating Committee has requested legislation closing the city's cooperation with ODOT for the agency's resurfacing of Quaker Road, State Route nineteen, between North Sandusky Avenue and the city's corporation limits. The city's share of the project cost has risen from five thousand four hundred dollars to ten thousand one fifty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents, requiring an additional appropriation of six thousand dollars. Shock made a motion to approve the Plating Committee's legislation, with a second by Myers, which passed by voice vote. Number one, various appropriations. Auditor Joyce Schiffer said the following appropriations need to be made. A, from unappropriated general funds, six thousand dollars to two-ten street construction, maintenance, and repair, seventy-six-ten street constructions, maintenance, and repair, twenty-five capital outlay to cover the city's ten thousand one hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-eight cent share of the cost of ODOT's resurfacing of Quaker Road, State Route nineteen, between North Sandusky Avenue and the city's corporation limits. B, from unappropriated general funds, twenty-two thousand six hundred ninety dollars to eight-twenty derelict building liability, seventy-one fifteen fire department, twenty-eight other uses for the insurance check, and the same amount received for a fire loss at one-twenty-five Killborne Avenue, which will be returned to the property owner. C, from unappropriated general funds, an amount to be determined by the law director to program seven, general government, seventy-seven twenty-five, seventy-seven twenty-six, seventy-seven twenty-seven, and seventy-seven twenty-eight, law director, twenty-three contractual services for expert witness fees pertaining to the city's meeting with the ODNR on the disposition of the Plating Reservoir. Myers made a motion to request legislation to accommodate various appropriations with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Three, Sack adjourned Special Finance Committee meeting at seven fifty-seven PM.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions or comments regarding the Finance Committee minutes?
Mr. Myers?
I'm present. Yes? Just a couple small corrections on, uh, the appropriations. In paragraph A, that should be from unappropriated street funds, not general funds.
Okay.
And in B, it should be from unappropriated derelict building liability funds, not general funds. Derelict building liability.
Word that come back, or? Just a little bit further in line.
Yeah. Okay.
Need a motion to make?
I need a motion to make these changes to the minutes. Motion by Mr. Myers?
Second.
Hi, Mr. Shock? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
No, wait a minute, we can't do that. Uh, you're not on Finance.
Oh.
I need to Finance people.
Phil.
Mr. Myers?
Mr. Sack, got it?
Mr. Myers? Okay. Okay, by Myers, motion by Myers, second by Sack to amend the minutes, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, minutes are amended, thank you. Uh, if you'd like to, this is the. You need to please, this is out to Sack. Back to the left seat, yeah.
Number four, public education, there was none. Number five, Sack asked for a motion to adjourn General Committee, motion by McKeever, and second by Myers, to adjourn at seven fifty-eight PM, motion passed.
Okay, thank you. We had a Special Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting on Monday, August the twenty-sixth, at twenty nineteen, at six PM. Uh, Mr. Wireball?
Yes, uh, members present, uh, in the committee were Bruce Truca, Doug, well, I guess all members. The members in the committee are Bruce Truca, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. Members present were Bruce Truca, Doug Foote, Mark McKeever, myself, Chair, and council persons, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shock, were also present. Uh, the Special Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting was called by Dusare City Council to discuss disposition of the Plating Reservoir. The meeting was called to order by Wireball at six PM. The Plating Reservoir, the city has received a chief's order from the ODNR pertaining to the poor condition of the dam, and has four options regarding the property. Repairing the reservoir to bring it within state compliance, which could cost more than a million dollars. Completely draining the reservoir and remediating the dam so the reservoir cannot refill. Draining the reservoir, uh, bringing the reservoir to a level below the threshold for ODNR jurisdiction, and remediating the dam so it remains at that level. Selling the reservoir and transferring any liability for its condition to a third party, although the ODNR has indicated the city could retain liability if the third party fails although ODNR has indicated the city could retain liability if the third party fails to bring the dam into ODNR compliance. Pat Murphy, 153 Washington Square, has expressed an interest in purchasing the property and assuming the cost of any repairs and related liability. If the city retains ownership of the reservoir and drains it below the ODNR jurisdiction threshold, the agency has indicated there would be no need for the city to present an emergency action plan for the reservoir and no immediate need for an inundation study, while the timetable for future repairs could be pushed back 12 months. In addition, the city could avoid an appeal hearing before the ODNR schedule for October 22nd and any further fines or costs. Barry France of Diversified Environmental Consulting, which has been working with the city on remediating the city's reservoirs, said a partial draining would take 10 to 20 weeks at a rate of one foot per week. He also addressed various engineering concerns associated with draining. Auditor Joyce Schiffer noted that because the fine reservoir is no longer connected to the city's water supply, water rates could only be adjusted to pay for any reservoir...
Could not be adjusted.
Or could not be adjusted to pay for any reservoir repairs. Also discussed during the meeting were the availability of grant sediment at the bottom of the reservoir and Murphy's plans for the land in the event he acquires it. The following people addressed the committee on the future disposition of the fine reservoir. Michael Stover, 3059 Lindis Street, Mike Hetzel, 3409 Stetser Road, Carolyn Shireman of Ucires, Ray Tidoff, 210 Ethel Street, Candace Yocum, 946 South Walnut Street, Kurt Fankhauser, 1675 South Sandusky Avenue, Richard Crary, 1374 Navetta, Winford Road, Pam Dunn, 9491 Jump Street, Sally Johnson, Bill Stuckert, 205 North Spring Street, Charles Garrett, 4602 Stetser Road, Linda Jones, 2237 State Route 602, Mark Millheim, 1617 West Southern Avenue, and Pat Murphy, 153 Washington Square. Wireball adjourned the meeting at 8:06 PM.
Okay, any questions or comments regarding these minutes?
Yeah, I do. I mean, I hear this million dollar loan here that, I mean, they get this repaired, fully repaired. I don't know. Is that just a figure or what? Who said it?
The French Senator.
Aye.
Okay, then the Public Lands and Buildings and Finance Committees met in special session today on Tuesday, September 3rd at 6:30 PM. We need a report from both. Mr. Wireball?
I guess. Our report was, we were going to, we asked to transfer, for transfers of $25,000 for personal services, from personal service to Capitol Pop Lane. Swimming pool fund.
Okay.
And I don't know who paid that. I'm gonna get, take notes.
Ms. Sack?
And Finance met from the, plus from Public Lands and Buildings to transfer $25,000 from personal services to Capitol Outlay. First by Kevin and a second by Dan, and motion passed.
Ended.
We adjourned the special joint Public Lands and Buildings and Finance Committee meeting at 7 o'clock PM.
Thank you. We had a Special Economic Development Committee meeting. Mr. Foote?
Special Economic Development meeting was called at order at 7:00 PM. Members in attendance were Monica Sack, Dan Wireball, Mark McKiever, and myself, Chair. Special Economic Development Committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reeser to discuss community reinvestment area agreement. Ordinance number 42-2019, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Ucires, Ohio to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with props for us LLC and Monarch Restaurant Group Incorporated and income tax agreement with the Ucires City Schools in the current tax and emergency. Motion was made by Mr. McKiever, with a second by Mr. Wireball. Motion passed. I adjourned the Special Economic Development Committee meeting at 7:03 PM.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that minute, those minutes? We do not have a Traffic Commission report. The next Traffic Commission meeting is this Friday at 11:00 AM, and that is here in council chambers. This Friday at 11:00 AM is the next Traffic Commission meeting. Does anyone have any traffic questions for Mayor Reeser? Yes?
I was approached by several people about Shell Avenue and South Sandusky during the morning and evening bus pickup drop-off. People trying to turn off the Shell Avenue onto Sandusky cannot see the northbound lane. They have to pull out because of where the bus parks and cars parked there.
We're talking about the, blocked by what cars, the residential corner?
Right there, the Altice.
Okay.
The bus stops there. People drop their kids off or pick their kids up there. They're having trouble. They can't see to the south as they're pulling up. They have to keep edging out because cars are parked there and the bus and...
Who's having trouble? The bus, does that any trouble?
No, other people are having trouble.
Because of the...
Because of the congestion and people parking there.
Okay, okay, so...
They like to have somebody observe them.
Do you know what time it is? Is it for middle school or is it for elementary school? Is this different?
I, I, I'm not sure what time. It's in the morning. It's like 7:45, so that would probably be elementary.
Yeah, that'd be elementary. Okay, so if it's a problem that they've decided...
Yeah, if they can have the police observe there so they have somebody to...because they can't, they can't pull out to make a right-hand turn or left-hand turn because they can't see the northbound lane.
They're blocked by the cars, not the bus.
Yeah, correct. That's what I was told.
Why are there cars there though?
Parking there to pick up their kids.
Kids can't go on the bus. Kids don't walk to the bus stop.
I, 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 I'm just addressing what I was...
I just heard you like the way we walked to school a mile away.
A mile away, not...
And the smell. In snow, you know? There were no snow days either.
Okay, any other comments on traffic, the mayor?
You remember that, right?
Yes, I remember it well.
Did you investigate, I'm sorry, did you investigate the intersection of Beale Avenue and Sandusky, especially the westbound?
The cars are going now. I've been there a few times, no cars parked there.
Well, no, it was the sign on the fencing there at the Old Swan. If you're heading, if you're heading west on Beale Avenue and you come up to Sandusky and you can't see south until you stick your nose of your car out into the lane, that's another section right there.
I thought you were talking about the cars, the new car.
Oh, so they can make a right turn on red.
Yeah, they can't make a right-hand turn on red because they have to keep edging out. They can't see.
Because they're...
There's a sign there.
I misunderstood you. What sign is it?
There's a safety sign or something there.
It's not white there. Wait for lights.
I'm just...
You can't wait to open it. I'll look at it.
I just...
Okay, any other traffic issues? I guess I would like to say compliments to the group that's working on North Sandusky Avenue. They have really done a good job of keeping lane traffic running both directions while they're putting in the curbs and doing everything up there.
Really nice of them.
They're doing, yeah, and they're doing a really good job of not interfering a whole lot with it.
It was a large grant that we received and we were really fortunate to receive.
Okay, I need a motion to accept committee minutes and related committee reports collectively as a man.
Sub move, second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We have the report of city officers. Mayor Reeser?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Football had a wonderful Labor Day weekend, the very last weekend holiday. Summer went fast, didn't it? September is a beautiful month in Ohio. It dries up and warm and the lanes are cool and it's football season and there's lots going on. I know Friday's coming up for our last one, but there's also Norton Days on Saturday. Shortly after that, early October is spectacular, lots of bad weather this fall. So, nice crowd at the football game. And I lost lunch. I've got a complimentary lunch that we were taking this year, so, so anyway, at least we'll have lunch in Ucires to make sure the tax dollars support Ucires. I was able to take the soil and water conservation tour, really the first time I've done that. Really a very interesting tour to know how, you know, the conservation techniques of area farmers affect our water supply. And of course, it flows down here to the lake, so, very interesting time. Got to spend some, good time with fellow elected officials and looking forward to the weekend. My wife and I were among many guests at the governor's home in Columbus. Wasn't last week, it was the week before. And I was, got a chance to thank Governor Dewine for hitting it around running, which he has done, John used to, their cabinet's done, all involved from the beginning. I expressed concern about local government funds, you know, and it's on their radar. This is what they took out right now is increasing tax revenue for our streets and maintenance of bridges, so, and that's, that was a good increase. We will see some additional money to, to around $300,000 next fiscal year, so, which will help us improve our streets. Dave Bush, my longtime friend and classmate, received a well-deserved, outstanding senior citizen award for Crawford County, and I was able to give him a proclamation for this achievement. He's probably no Dave, he's probably pretty much been a lifelong resident. Many boards he sits on, and he's a host of Spotlight at WDCO. Rather than knowing all his accomplishments, I should say congratulations to him, many more years of supporting the efforts in the community. Joyce and I were part of a very important banquet last week. Together we hurt, together we heal, and the banquet was held. Nice crowd, nice food, everybody, what a great group it is, and the talks were incredible. You know, the keynote speaker was unbelievable, so, this is a group that we need to support and with our financial abilities as well, so we do so much for the community. You know, like I said earlier, Sam and Mary Norton Days are this weekend. It's kind of the unofficial kickoff to the bicentennial. The Nortons arrived 200 years ago this year. We are going to plant two oak trees in Allmiller Park on Saturday morning at 9:00 AM in our honor of Sam and Mary. Hopefully, they will be known as the Norton Oaks forever, or if long as the Oaks are alive. Then we go down to the Shines Art Park at 10:00 AM, and soon Norton will be here. And there'll be some little program there at Shines Art Park at 10:00 AM, and then lots of festivities over at the historical society's scorehouse. The same day is 7:30, it's a busy day. It's Preservation Society's men's breakfast at the train station, 7:30. Tickets are available, come and have breakfast and a good, good talk. Gary Frankhouse and I met with Montrose Group. These are the folks that are working on our opportunities open plan, and we're looking to see how we can make that a great program, the federal program, work for Ucires. Montrose is money well spent, they're sharp people, there are a lot of good connections, and this is all looking forward to the future. Couple things I did list, the IAAF, our guys over at the fire station filled the boot last week, and they did really well. It's, it's a great program, it's one of the ways that our safety forces go back to the community and beyond, so we thank them for that. And I do want to say, I, there was a congratulations to my parents, Lee and Ann Reeser, they had a 70th wedding anniversary, 70th wedding anniversary, and so, they're up in Florida and spending some time out and about, so, it's amazing to be 70 years with some, you know, with your spouse as well, so, I, I'm very proud of them, and they have my great parents, and their health is very good, so they could at 80, who knows? There's a referral, there's a couple things. Deer lottery, if you are interested in shooting deer, and when I woke up this morning, there were 10 deer right outside my...
Beautiful picture, yes.
Yeah, so, unfortunately, the city women's seat can't shoot them, but we're going to collect names through September 17, and the lottery will be held on 9/19, so, at 10:00 AM. So, if you are interested, stop there and call the mayor's office. And Jeff has one referral. He referred the OPWCC project for 2020, new water line on State Route 98 to Service and Finance Committees. And that's it for me. Thank you, Madam President.
Any questions for the mayor this evening? I thought I need a motion then to refer the OPWCC project for 2020, the new water line on State Route 98 to the Service and Finance Committees.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Truca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. And even Service Director, Law Director, Rob Ratliff?
Hey, Madam President. One quick item of news that is a bit of a change to the dam reservoir discussion we had last week. It turns out, to help Mr. McKiever, Ben McKiever, and our partner, the city of Ucires did not build that dam. It was actually built by something called the Ucires Development Company, and we purchased it in 1926 for some $600,000. It seems like an awful lot of money even in 1926.
Yeah, that was the entire water plant and the reservoirs and the whole thing.
Water plant and everything, yeah.
All the underground.
Yeah, yeah, so the whole thing. We bought it in 1926. I've conveyed that information to ODNR. I don't know how that changes if anything their calculus, but just let me bring it down. One referral, Mr. Noel, I paused it, I didn't tell you the bit. The city farmland that we did not lease this year, and we talked previously about maybe transferring or selling it, we have received a proposal for purchase of that land, so, I would like to refer that to Public Lands and Buildings. We're going to discuss.
Any questions for the law director? Mr. Foote?
On Mansfield Street, I believe it is, there's a house that they had some red tape around, some guys doing some work that looked like it was already cleared out. I think it was on the stretch in between Spring and Poplar.
Yes, with lots of policemen there?
I didn't see the police there at that point in time, but I just, I drove by and saw red tape and guys looking like they were, I don't even know what they were doing, so I thought maybe you might have an idea.
No, just...
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, I asked.
Mr. Wireball?
So, so where are we on the reservoir, in, for, of the fires? Are we draining it or are we allowed to drain?
A slight complication on the draining.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, intention was to drain it, to open the valves. It started to process. Well, EPA is not allowing us to do that because they don't want the water to be drained that comes from the bottom of the reservoir. So, yeah, so, we are developing a plan right now to actually pump it over, I see, so we'll pump it from the top, and then as it gets to a lower level, then we'll, you know, consider whether we're, our next step would be to notch it, but we'll start to doing it here this probably this week.
Okay. Wouldn't it be nice if the government entities talked?
ODNR and the EPA and like the board.
So, but at least we've got a step we know we're going to be taking here with this week. Okay, very good.
I have, I did reach out to ODNR pretty helping them be able to pass, give us an interview with EPA.
Yeah. There's the ones who said run out and open the valve.
Easy.
Okay.
Mr. Sherman?
Can we get pumps from like the Han National Center? I mean, that's how we pump water, why do we have to drink all the pollen water years ago?
We've got a pump.
Why do we have a pump out there?
I say otherwise, I have no account we need that sells pumps.
We bring the gardeners.
Okay, any other questions for the law director? Okay, I need a motion then for the one unused city farmland property to go to public lands and buildings.
Sub move, second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Myers, for the one unused farmland to go to public lands and buildings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Motion passed, thank you. Moving on to the auditor, Mrs. Shepherd.
Thank you, ma'am president. You have the usual reports, statement of cash position, revenue tallies, budget, and income tax comparisons for your review. I do have something I'd like to read. We don't get these very often, thank yous or kudos or whatever, but last week, on the 29th, a rather angry taxpayer called into income tax and left a not very nice message. And Kelly called this person back and explained the situation and what they needed to do and whatever, so, this person sent an email, the taxpayer, it's confidential who, but I just wanted to read this. "I called in at 4:30 p.m. on May 29, 19, to complain about an income tax notice I received. I wanted to be mad and be mean, but Kelly was so nice and understanding I couldn't be. I'm still mad at Ucires, but Kelly is really good at her job. Just thought the department should know she might never get compliments due to the nature of her department. Thanks." So, like I say, don't get those very often, especially in the income tax department, but I thought that was pretty good, thought I'd share it.
Thank you.
I do have some referrals. We will need to establish the 2020 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Grant and the 2020 Victims of Crime Act grant, and then we'll also need to appropriate the necessary funds to the above referenced grants for the first quarter of the grant year beginning October 1, 2019. And then, in addition, we've received some donations to Operation Hope, which will need to be appropriated in the general fund, security of persons and property, police department materials and supplies. And I have added another referral here.
It's not on your...
It's not on your list, I did give it to Todd.
It was received.
I just, it was kind of an afterthought this afternoon. On August 26th, we received a package from OWDA that was dated August 22nd, 2019, stating that the loan, the interest rate loan in the amount of $1,051,315 for the Hopley and Southern combined sewer overflow separation was approved on June 27th, 2019. And this package included a bill for the application fee of $3,680 that was also dated June 27th, but we didn't get it till August 26th. Since I wasn't aware of this bill until the package arrived, I need legislation approving payment of this bill without the customary POD prior to the expense. They don't communicate very well. It was nice of them to send it to us, but, you know, they approved it in June and didn't send it till end of August, so.
Any questions for the auditor? Not if I need referrals to finance committee, all four of these items, which is establishing the 2020 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Grant and establishing the 2020 Victims of Crime Act grant. We also need to appropriate necessary funds to the above referenced grant for the first quarter of the year, which begins on October the 1st, and we also received donations to Operation Hope, which will need to be appropriated into the general fund, security of persons and property, police department materials and supplies, and then also, let's, yeah, and then also we will need to submit to finance to pay this bill for $3,680 without the customary purchase order. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Schach. All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Motion passed, these four items then to finance committee, thank you. You also have, from the auditor, they're in here, her tallies to budget and the other financial reports through the end of August, okay? And both are very timely, ma'am here. So those are for you to look at, any questions, we brought back to finance committee meeting? Treasure, you have, the treasure's report dated July of 2019, was given to you at the last meeting, if you have no questions, we need to accept and file this report.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foote. All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Motion passed. We have no report from the police chief or the fire chief. I need a motion to accept the city officers' report.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sax, second by Mr. Foote, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Motion passed, thank you. This is for, another time for business input regarding reports of standing and/or special committee meetings and of city officers. If anyone would like to address counsel over any of these reports, now is the time to go to the podium and state your name and address. Anyone to address counsel this evening? No one? Do we need a recess? No? We're moving our lawn, okay. There are, actually, you have it in your packet, everybody has the second sheet, don't they? So, the second sheet, we didn't know if you were going to have this piece of legislation or not, so, we will incorporate it as we go through this, so, we start off here with consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have eight pieces of legislation, five ordinances and three resolutions. Ordinance number 38, 2019, amending the traffic control map in file established by ordinance 20778 in sections 305.01, 305.02, and 305.03 of the classified ordinances of the City of Ucires, Ohio by amending ordinance 32, 2019, amending ordinance 6267, and amending ordinance 6377, and adding additional signage, all as detailed herein, that is referred to the Health and Safety Committee. Ordinance 39, 2019, a resolution recognizing the necessity for exemptions of the sidewalk placement setbacks for development of 1517 East Mansfield Street and declaring an emergency, whereas section 905.04 requires that the city council of the City of Ucires pass by resolution, a finding of necessity for modification of sidewalk setbacks, and whereas Prop 4 LLC has stated its intention to construct a Burger King restaurant at 1517 East Mansfield Street, and whereas a modification of the sidewalk setback provisions is necessary to allow development of this cross of the land, that is referred to the Plating Committee. Ordinance number 40, 2019, amending and supplementing ordinance number 61, 2018, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2019, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of $3,829 to the contractual services line item within the law director category within the program seven general government subparagraph, further appropriating from unappropriated street construction, maintenance, and repair funds, the sum of $6,000 to the capital app lane line item within the street construction, maintenance, and repair category within the street construction, maintenance, and repair subparagraph. And finally appropriating from unappropriated derelict liability liability funds, the sum of $22,690 to the other uses line item within the fire department category within the derelict building liability subparagraph, and declaring an emergency, that is referred back to the finance committee. Ordinance number 41, 2019, amending and supplementing ordinance number 61, 2018, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2019, by decreasing the current balance in the personal services line item by $25,000 within the pool category, and increasing the current balance to the capital app lane line item by $25,000 within the pool category within the swimming pool subparagraph within the swimming pool fund, and declaring an emergency, that is referred to the finance committee. Ordinance number 42, 2019, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Ucires, Ohio to enter in with community reinvestment area agreement with Prop 4 LLC and Monarch Restaurant Group, Inc., and an income tax agreement with Ucires City Schools, and declaring this act an emergency, that's referred to the Economic Development Committee. Resolution number 32, 2019, a resolution to create a U.S. Census Count Committee for the City of Ucires, whereas the Constitution of the United States mandates a head count every 10 years of everyone residing in all 50 states and territories, and whereas the first census was conducted in 1790, and it has been kept there every 10 years since then, therefore the next census will be taken in 2020, and whereas the federal government uses census data to make decisions about the level one types of federal funding our community will receive, including the funds for education, public transportation, elderly programs, and many other programs, that is referred to the Economic Development Committee. Resolution number 233, 2019, the following resolution enacted by the City of Ucires of Proppa County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the legislative authority or local public agency or LPA in the matter of the stated described project and declaring an emergency. I'll read through the second whereas clause, whereas on the 21st day of May, 2019, the LPA enacted legislation proposing cooperation with the Director of Transportation for the described project. The project consists of resurfacing Quaker Road, State Route 19, between Sandusky Avenue and Ucires Western Corporation, limit, including pavement markets buying within the City of Ucires, and whereas, the LPA shall cooperate with the Director of Transportation in the above described project as follows. The city agrees to assume and bear 100% of the entire cost of the improvement within the city limits, less the amount of federal funds set aside by the Director of Transportation for the financing of this improvement, from funds allocated by the Federal Highway Administration, U.S. Department of Transportation. He shows the cost of the LPA is now estimated in the amount of $10,155.78, but said estimated amount is to be adjusted in order that the LPA's all but share of said improvement shall correspond with set percentages of actual costs when said actual costs are determined, that is referred to the Plating Committee. And finally, resolution number 234, 2019, the following resolution enacted by the City of Ucires of Proppa County, Ohio, here and after referred to as the city in the matter of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, we have resolved by the council of the City of Ucires, State of Ohio, two principal members elected there to concur in section one, project description, PID number 1009334, whereas, the state has identified the need for the described project, bridge inspection program services, including but not limited to routine inspections, element level inspections, critical maintenance reports, fracture critical member inspections, load rating calculations and reports, weight limits posting sign recommendations, scour assessments, scour plant actions, development of fractured critical plans, and underwired dive inspection reports if needed, and that is referred to the Plating Committee.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept this as the first reading?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever, all those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number 38-2019 is referred back to Health and Safety Committee. Ordinance 39-2019 is referred to Plating. Ordinance 40-2019 is referred to Finance. Ordinance 41-2019 is referred to Finance. Ordinance 42-2019 is referred to Economic Development. Resolution 232-2019 is referred to Economic Development, and resolution 233-2019 is referred to Plating, and resolution 234-2019 is referred to Plating. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone here to address counsel this evening about legislation? No one? Committee reports on pending legislation, Health and Safety Committee?
Health and Safety is favorable to ordinance 38-2019, the traffic control map changes.
Plating?
Okay, Plating is favorable to ordinance 39-2019, the sidewalk setback exemption. Also, Plating is favorable to resolution 233-2019, the ODOT paving of Quaker Road. And finally, Plating is favorable to resolution 234-2019, the ODOT bridge inspection program.
And thank you. Economics Development?
Economics Development is favorable to ordinance 42-2019, community reinvestment area agreement. Economics Development is also in favor of resolution 232-2019, the U.S. Census.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance is favorable to ordinance 40-2019, the various appropriations.
And 41?
And Finance is favorable to ordinance 41-2019, the transfer.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye, opposed say no. Motion passed. Prefer the consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 38-2019, which are the traffic control map changes, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency, and to write for a piece of legislation?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Ordinance number 38, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 38-2019?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance number 38-2019, the sidewalk setback exemption, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance number 40-2019, the various appropriations is duly adopted.
For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 40-2019, which are the various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance number 40-2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 40-2019?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance number 40-2019, the various appropriations is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 42-2019...
Wait one.
I'm sorry. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 41-2019, which is the transfer, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance number 41-2019, the transfer is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 40-2019, which are the various appropriations...
42.
Um, I'm sorry, down here. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number 42-2019, which is the community reinvestment area agreement, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Ordinance number 42-2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 42-2019?
So moved.
Second.
Sax?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance number 42-2019, the community reinvestment area agreement is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of resolution number 232-2019, which is the U.S. Census, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sax?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution number 232-2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution 232-2019?
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Resolution 232-2019, the U.S. Census is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of Resolution number 233-2019, which is the ODOT paving of Quaker Road, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
Resolution number 233, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 233-2019?
So, second.
Sack?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution number 233-2019, the ODOT paving of Quaker Road is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed Resolution 234-2019, which is the ODOT Bridge Inspection Program, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution number 234, 2019.
Do I have here a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 234-2019?
So moved, second.
Schott?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Resolution number 234-2019, the ODOT Bridge Inspection Program is duly adopted. Thank you. Okay, moving on, unfinished business. Does anyone have any unfinished business they'd like to bring up this evening?
None.
See, life is good. Okay, I have a new miscellaneous business. Uh, I have a referral, and this goes to, what, maybe Finance Committee? Uh, it's that time of year where we have to update our codified ordinances. So, I'd like to refer the codified ordinance update to Finance Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed, thank you. This Friday, September 6th, this first Friday, is Harvest in History from 5:00 to 8:00 PM in downtown UciRis. It should be a beautiful evening, Friday evening. But we're done with movies, you don't have any more movies to show. You know my movies?
Football season.
It is, right, it is, um, yeah. So you can stop downtown, get something to eat, go to football games. That was. Saturday, September 7th, is Norton Day, the UciRis Historical Society Society from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. They'll be planting a couple trees early during the day out at Alheller Park. Go out and join them there, and then come in down for a short, uh, get together at the Shines Art Park, okay?
Yes, Ed Norton, Ed Sue Norton will be there.
They're absolute delight. I've ridden a couple freights with them and had the opportunity to talk with them, and, and they just so love the history of UciRis and everything about it, nice people. On Saturday, October the 5th, this is maybe our first announcement out about this, it is spooktacular out at Alheller Park from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, so, and generally, the R A I N date is usually the following, Saturday. So, uh, look for that, make sure you get your, all your costumes and everything ready for October the 5th then. Any other new and miscellaneous business anyone would like to bring up this evening?
Yeah, I have a something.
Mr. Wireball?
Yeah. On Monday, in which is going to be the night, we're having renewable energy symposium, so to speak. Jay Hart from Green Energy Ohio is, uh, is going to speak about some of that stuff,